To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close carry. From the minutes from three four.
Look, correct me if I read through them earlier, I make a motion to approve the minutes from three four.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close carry. General public, breaking down the doors again this morning. Okay, public hearing, Humboldt County budget for nineteen twenty. Motion to approve the public hearing.
So.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close carry. Okay, discussion on the county budget.
All right. I've got my papers here, I've got these under a lot of other stuff.
No, you don't have much.
Um, I probably didn't give you guys copies of this, did I? Come to think of it.
No, you threatened to.
Should I do, I'll do a real quick copy.
Nah.
Cover page or?
Yes, whatever.
You follow along or?
Simple.
Okay, yes. Um, based on what the board had told me to go ahead with, um, the general basic levy will be three dollars and eighty cents, the, um, probably general supplemental, a dollar fifty. Isn't that funny, when you get older, you need a ruler to follow. Debt service.
That is small, right.
Point four four seven four seven, I know, I'll have to talk to state and say, man, these forms are tiny. Um, I'm sorry, that was, uh, county social services, point four four seven four seven. Um, and that was based upon the amount of money that county social services said they needed for this year, so, um, I take the valuation divided by the amount they need to come up with a levy rate for them. Um, debt service is, uh, point oh seven eight five four, for a total for, or a subtotal of five point eight two six oh one. The rural services levy is three ninety-five, that's unchanged. Um, the total levy then is nine point seven seven six oh one, which is down, um, a couple of cents from last year. So our total expenses, let's just go back to the expense sheet, um, total expenses including transfers, I'm gonna do without the transfers, 'cause I've got a lot to it, ten million five five seven two two five, and then we have roughly, uh, a million nine in transfers. It's mostly to secondary road, um, some of those are to some other places, but they're very small in size compared to the secondary road transfer.
It was ten million and what?
Um, ten million five five seven two two five is the total expenses. Total revenues of ten point, or ten million three fourteen six forty-six, and transfers in match a million nine, and then we have five thousand of, uh, fixed asset sales. So, total expenses and transfers of twelve four eighty-nine oh oh eight, and revenues of twelve two thirty-one four twenty-nine, so we'll be using a little bit of, uh, cash balance, about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth. Evaluations went up this year, that helped us to keep our levies at least at a, you know, the same and even lower than they were last year. Um, not sure what the future holds, but at least for now, that's what it is.
Well, if we knew the future, we'd be a lot, we could do a lot more things.
Yeah, we'd be rich, 'cause we could tell everybody then. So I have all the detailed schedules, if anybody needs to look at those. Um, those detailed schedules are the ones that you guys went through and looked at for everybody.
Individually, the individual ones that we did?
Yep, it brings the totals forward on these pages here, so.
Okay.
Both revenues and expenses.
Any public input?
Make a motion to close it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, adopt resolution number twenty nineteen dash six, a resolution adopting the compensation board recommendations for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
I did remember to give it out.
Yep, we got that. This is just, uh, yeah, well, it's pretty much spelled out, compensation board recommended for, for full salaries for next fiscal year. I don't think there's been any, uh, pushback from anybody. I'd make a motion to, uh, accept and adopt the resolution twenty nineteen dash six for next fiscal year.
My second.
Any other discussion? We don't need a real call on a resolution, right?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Okay, adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash seven, a resolution approving the Humboldt County budget for nineteen twenty.
Same thing, we just went through it. I think everything is in order, so I will make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty nineteen dash seven, approving the county budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry.
And, uh, Peggy, we would like to extend the thank you for all of your nights up here.
Yes, for going through all of the budgeting numbers.
The extra work you do to try to make the thing go round and round, so.
Train derailment up by both ways.
Oh, no.
Really?
Yeah.
Rerailment. Does it have anything to do with the road?
I don't think there's anything in here that I.
These are the claims.
Okay.
Yeah, just a list here and then. Thank you. All right, talk to you later, Ben.
Thanks, man.
I want to thank you guys for your leadership and guidance through that process, because without you guys to do that for me, I wouldn't know where to begin and where to end, so.
Well, you asked us the correct questions, and hopefully we can debate it and give you the correct answers.
Yeah, at least I know where you're headed to, selling that makes a big difference.
Appreciate all the hard work and burning up the electricity up here at night.
That's all right, the midnight oil.
Just keep drinking the water and just then go.
You mean the coolant?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's still about five minutes early, kind of the order.
We can go to the claims, I think we got a number there.
Yep.
I, on the general claims, I had one thirty-seven six twenty-two dash seventy-two, and drainage sixty-seven hundred and thirty-four dollars even. Those were the right numbers I got.
That's what I had.
I'd make a motion to approve those claims.
Second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carry.
Where's that?
This is the drainage.
Okay. You can do the child support one, too, if you want.
There's something, did I see that in here?
This is sent to us by Jess Wornamout, the Child Support Recovery Unit Support Recovery Supervisor, and every time there's a change, it goes to all the counties that are involved in it. And then the chairman of the board supervisors needs to sign in, and the county attorney also, and I have sent it up to the county attorney for him to review and told him to come down and sign it, so.
Was that back to our dog or ordinance? Is that what you're talking?
Um, no, this is.
No, this, this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This is along with that, it was confusing on my paper.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what it all means.
I'm, okay, 'cause not either.
Unless he's telling us their, it's total lack of budget for you to see.
Hello?
It's the only thing I can figure out. And that's part of their revision to include the program budget for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Does this have to be done every year?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, uh, thanks, I, but, uh, no, I think you've got that up, so maybe you may just block off that. Okay, thanks. Two months, right, on the track? Train derailment.
Oh, I heard that.
Where was it at?
Uh, east of Livermore.
Okay, thanks, 'cause I wasn't sure where it was.
I've had a train derailment in that area for years, thankfully.
Well, I'm sure with the freezing dawn, ice and.
Something is it, I got a feeling. It's, okay, here it is. Some of the political subsidies, Webster County, Calvin Hamilton Humboldt, Paul Coniston Wright, or the, so every county's gotta do this, it's in this group.
No, six, I believe, six counties?
Mm-hmm. Well, I don't see anything out of line, even sent some extra information, anybody else?
No.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the Cooperative Child Support Recovery Unit County Contract First Amendment.
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry.
I need two of these signed, so if you have your copies, then we'll maybe sign that one too, otherwise I can make a copy.
I've got a couple here, too, you can.
Need more copies?
Oh, Nathan.
Nathan, you giggle by yourself, I know you're reading.
I just, I just ran thoughts and I'm just giggling. I'm sure it's not a fourteen car train derailment, but the locomotive has a broken axle, so it's off the rail.
Oh. That'll make it interesting.
Anywhere near the road?
I assume it's probably pretty close to the road.
Hmm. You know, most of those things just actually just sits underneath it and they're bolted on there, it's just crazy.
I know, it just.
Sits on top of it, like a.
Okay, that's one we, yeah.
Do we wanna move down to our committee reports, being we don't, we have to wait till nine for the?
Well, they gotta.
Or the eight forty-five, excuse me.
Eight forty-five, what?
He's looking at the animal ordinance.
Yes.
I have more copies here, if anybody from press needs another copy of that animal.
I got one last week.
Okay, yep.
It's the same thing, right?
Yep, doesn't change.
Can I get a copy of that compensation, uh, sheet?
Sure, can we wait till we're done?
Yes, yep, perfect.
You say I run you guys copies, maybe, but this was not on my beam on the other day, I guess.
Okay.
Want this one?
No, the budget stuff that I had to get you guys. We'll make copies for that one.
All right, third and final reading of the Humboldt County Ordinance Number Sixty-nine, an order concerning animal protection and control for the Humboldt County.
How did, did your meeting up in Bode go all right, the chair the other night? Everything was good with them when they were reading?
They just didn't understand it, and I explained to them, you know, get Humboldt ordinance, change it to Bode, read it over, and if they want any changes, change it, but anything to make sure the fifty dollar and a hundred dollars is in there. And they was thinking they was gonna get charged for everybody in town that was gonna call for a dog, and I said, no, only a representative of the city that calls L E C will be charged the thirty bucks, plus my list for the dogs and for cats. But I said, not every citizen can just call in and say, I got a dog running. Has to be an official from the city. And I said, make sure that's in there too, so they was happy when I left.
And we haven't had any other calls or from any other, uh, city?
Anything.
You heard anything, Rick?
I haven't really quite, anybody?
I haven't either.
I haven't either.
Well, aren't they essentially adopting the same ordinance then?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Except ours is taken off of the.
Right, that's where this came from.
But, uh, wording for the county, 'cause they've got livestock that in the, uh, county or the city ordinance, so.
Well, with that, and being it's after the eight forty-five, if there was gonna be anybody here to object, I guess I would make a motion for the third and final reading.
I'll second.
That's sixty-nine.
Okay, need a roll call rule on this one?
No, not on the third and final, we'll need approval and final passing too, well.
Okay, is that coming next?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the third and final reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carry. Okay, now I need a final, approval and final passing to ordinance number sixty-nine.
So move.
I will second that.
Any other discussion?
Hey, now it's roll call.
Roll call rule.
Aye, aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Carrie?
Do you want me to record your?
I was gonna say, did you vote?
[laughing].
An analyst.
Just checking, maybe he didn't want his recording.
Yeah, I wanted his recording.
Good job.
Okay, I didn't hear ya, so we'll move down to committee reports.
I'll have you sign these three where your name is, and this one, I know that's my name.
All right, uh, Monday the fourth, I had an L E C meeting, seven thirty, Humboldt Council Chambers, and then from Wednesday afternoon through Friday afternoon, um, I was down in Ames for the State Weed Commissioners Conference and Invasive Species Management Conference, which was lumped together, but that's what they call it. Uh, brought a little bit of information back, I won't go into great detail, but it was very informative and educational. I'd never been to it before, very well, best attended one they've had, I mean, I'd.
So through the college, or?
No, it's, uh, there's a Weed Commissioners Association.
Oh.
Statewide.
Okay.
They have their own board, and they do their thing, and they've been doing this for a number of years, 'cause I've talked to one guy from, uh, I think it was Story County, and he said this is the twenty-ninth year for him.
Oh, wow.
I mean, it's something they do, it's, it's an annual conference. Um, it was, like I said, it's very informative, very educational, you know, didn't, had an idea, of course, what it was gonna be about, and it was, but a lot of good things covered. Uh, something that I learned about is called Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management, and you can look at the brochures, I won't bore you with the details, but it was very, very interesting how other counties do things, from weed control to this IRDM, uh, and who does it? And, you know, some are like us, they do contract out the services at this point, uh, it's just really, there's a lot of different ways of controlling weeds.
Hmm.
And so, uh, glad I went, it was, uh, like I said, it very, very informative and, and learned quite a bit, actually, going, so. So that was, uh, basically started Wednesday afternoon and, and went all day Thursday and then finished up Friday afternoon, so.
Wow.
It's a good, good deal, glad I went to it.
What was that at there?
It was in Ames, it was at the Quality Inn in Suites in Ames, they have it there every year, I guess, perhaps for a number of years, and that very well attended, um, by, you know, obviously everyone, it's statewide, so across the entire state, but, you know, just really, uh, some things touched, there's very good speakers, very, you know, knowledgeable people in their fields, obviously from herbicide, chemical speakers to forestry, uh, talked a little bit about that, invasive species, obviously, uh, what we need to be on the lookout for and how to control it, and just really, yeah, I mean, really a lot of good information and, uh, anything to do with, not just weed eradication, but just general management of right of ways and, you know, trails and all that kinda stuff, it was, it was really good, so I'm, I'm glad I took the time to go down to it, and I plan on going again next year, so. That was, uh, my big thing for last week, that took up a bit, bit of time, but like I said, it was well worth the time.
Rick, you got a report?
Uh, no, I had no meetings last week, but then the L E C, they did have, it was the two on the phone, so, that was the only one, and that was that, asking guy.
All right, Ruth?
Uh, Monday on the fourth, I went up and helped them unload the food pantry truck. Uh, Tuesday at six o'clock, I went up to the high school for that CFR program for, that they did last year at the high school with the kids and awareness on, uh, drugs issues, and I guess I would say that, um, their numbers were probably down a little bit from, evidently last year, they had a, a, uh, large turnout this year, I thought the numbers looked like they were quite down, but, and then, uh, Saturday morning, I went down to the town hall meeting with Cryen, Brink, and Saxon and listened to the, to them, uh, we did discuss our, um, that you, information that you forwarded to Cryen, Brink, Eric on the, the bridges and the roads and loading heavy timber loads through, and he assured us that it's more over in eastern Iowa than, than in this part of the state, so.
I'm glad that you got, got to that, though, that's what those things are for.
There was quite a few, how many people you supposed to be there, Kent? A dozen?
Yeah, probably a dozen.
And I think that, you know, um, they both, uh, were pretty upbeat, I guess, for, for some of the stuff, and then I went home Saturday afternoon and I heard the rebuttal from one of the people from the Democratic side that said that some of the stuff was shoved through and they didn't have a chance to listen and talk in the funnel and they just couldn't, so, you know, one or the other, that's all I did.
Well, I tried to participate in the Iowa Workforce Development Region Five, but I was, I was doing it by phone, and the phone conference number wasn't working, so I didn't have any other reason.
Okay, uh, Monday the fourth, I was up to Bode City Hall, met with the mayor and the council on the animal control ordinance, uh, Thursday, I had a nine one one for budget amendment and hearing. Passed that, that's all I did.
And shoot the pantry?
Yeah, I just, I got that down.
Monday afternoon?
Yeah, I just food pantry Monday, and I met with them, dude. I had that down.
Think you reminded him.
Well, he was there, 'cause.
Better than I was.
We all standing around waiting for the truck, as usual.
Yeah, he was late.
I think our gentleman from Odison, am I right?
All right.
Did you get out of the traffic up there, everything was good up in Odison area? Snow's not blowing.
Think about, we, we had to put in a stoplight and everything.
Now, things have changed, if that's the case.
Dramatically, if they were.
I wish it was, but.
Yeah, nice. Okay, about four minutes early, did that make a difference?
I bet it used. I just noticed on the agenda that, I think, they forgot the backside of my sheets of paper, 'cause there's supposed to be like seven parcels, not just three.
Ah-huh, yeah, I see that.
But still the same people, it's just there's each.
Seven parcels, you're saying?
There's, um, seven total parcels, not just those three that are listed on the agenda.
I'll make sure that those are in there, Jenna.
So what these are, are, um, seven empty lots owned by three different property owners that the City of Odison has been mowing for a hundred years.
I was.
And they want to get an assignment of the tax sale certificate to, um, go through the tax sale deed process, to get ownership of them and then do what they want, you know, keep them, one of them you need for your waters.
We have a city project going on, we need three of the properties, and while we were doing this, we, we noticed that this one, there's a lot of taxes against these, there is no possible way of anybody improving them or a chance of retaining them if we don't waive these fees.
So we visited about it, and they're willing to pay the drainage assessments, there's like five dollars per parcel for all the years, but asking if the penalty on the drainage be waived for them, and then, once they get ownership, they'll come back and ask about the taxes being evaded also, but at this time, they want to wait till they get the tax sale deed process finalized, so I understand it, is that what your attorney told you?
We will pay, we, we do discuss, we will pay the drainage fees on the, on the lot.
So is this all gonna revert to City of Odison property then, once you get through all this?
All before we waive the fees, before we waive the taxes.
They want to put it in their name before they ask for that portion of it, and I said they would pay the, any drainage that's been assessed, which is minimal for each parcel, if the penalties could be waived, since they go back to like nineteen ninety-nine.
I see that.
So they, I don't know how long they've been empty, uh, well, along the homes that they're on.
Our, our centennial, or, yeah, our centennial was ninety-six, so we've taken a number of those properties down before that happened, directly enough.
But they've been the ones mowing it to keep them looking.
Jason was explaining to me that, and then the well, obviously goes in.
Yeah, we need three lots for the well.
We need the set max for that.
We thought we were fine when we started the project, realized that we need two hundred feet instead of a hundred, so that's where we're at.
Well, you're going through the due process of it, it always amazes me that these things languish out there for how many years and nothing happens. So do you, these are still in someone's name, obviously, these parcels.
Are these the individuals even alive, do you know?
Yes, they are.
So they get set their taxes every year and they just don't pay them?
No.
No.
Some come back un, undeliverable, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, the only large assessments on them are due to the mowing, which, you know, a hundred dollars of parcel or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
For the whole summer, I don't know what they're.
We waive those, we just need the taxes.
That's right, 'cause you're the one who had it.
You could pay us.
No.
Have the property owners contacted you or anything?
Uh, no, and, and we continue to send them the bills all year for the mowing.
So you're getting the same response from the mowing bills as the tax, taxes.
So this will set it right and give us an opportunity then to maybe do something with the property that would bring some taxes back to the city or the county.
And this doesn't give them ownership, this gives them the right.
You just want to be able to go in there, get this done, and somebody comes back.
Yeah, so the property owner will get another ninety days before they lose, to decide if they wanna pay, but the property is not given, forgiven the taxes.
No, 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 no.
So they would pay the city the full amount owing.
We would just like to have, we're, we're in the process of doing this well project, and hopefully it would work well for us, we were trying to get this done by April, then this stumbling block came into place, and so now we've gotta get that out of the way.
So we have these three and four others.
Right.
They all in one group?
No, there's one, there's one that, actually, that's across the road from my shop, it's been there for years.
Really?
Then, uh, the other.
That's property.
Yeah, that's directly across, but that, we were looking at the amount that's against the lots, I thought, we better just try to do all this at once, rather than have to come back and say, do this now, we can do a lean search on all the properties at the same time and get it done.
And the country are all in block three and block nine, all the lots.
Yeah.
Um, just clarification, Jenna, for, so when I do my minutes, they're asking for an assignment of tax sale certificate and asking the penalty on drainage be waived, right? Okay, let me try and get that right.
Now, repeat that, I thought they were paying the drainage.
The penalty.
Penalty.
Okay, okay, okay.
They're asking for the penalty.
All right.
So once this gets through the process and the city gets ownership, then anything taxable is only to the city, then there is no more tax liability, because it's city property.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I would make a motion to, the way you stated your-
Assign the tax sale certificates and waive the penalty on drainage?
For those seven lots.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, carry it.
Very much.
Thank you.
Hannah, you make sure she gets the numbers on the, for the other four lots?
Yep.
For her minutes, then?
I pulled them off the sheets, but I'll check them with you and make sure I have them.
Thank you.
Good work, getting the, keeping the horse in front of the cart, so something doesn't come back.
We are, uh, the street and clear at the moment.
Yeah, you don't know who'll come up there delivering stuff.
That's exactly right.
I always tell Cal when I go up there, I say, I hate coming in here at eight o'clock, because the rush of traffic coming off.
Oh, it's awful, terrible traffic in that area, although there is a lot of truck traffic.
Well, they do.
There's days.
Yes, that's a fact.
Every time I've been over, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of trucks pouring out of there on nowadays, well, you know, you probably know.
Was that the cop?
Yeah, yeah, they moved a lot of stuff.
That's one of the, there's, is it two or three elevators in the state that are still privately owned? Everybody else is-
They're their own, I, Addison cop and the Addison cop, it's not new, and then they, they don't have five hundred locations.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Them and, they have, them and Algonha.
They, it's Addison-Algonha, but Algonha is basically just the, uh, two parts of that.
They are one, I think there's two other in the state.
That's crazy.
It is.
But that's just the way it's gone. Now they're conglomerates.
Did I hear, uh, our gentleman's running late?
Yeah.
Forty-five minutes?
Forty-five minutes late.
Which gentleman?
Solar guy.
Well, I didn't plan on being here all day, which is, because it's scheduled for eleven. He's running forty-five minutes late from eleven?
That's what I just heard Chris.
I'd say he's running forty-five minutes late.
Something like that.
What's the thing of eleven, who's presenting, or what are you going to tell us?
Uh, solar energy.
For the county?
For the county. See what it costs more in detail.
Well, we might have to try calling him and see, we should probably do that before we, if he's driving this way at forty-five minutes, that doesn't hardly put him in Waterloo. He's coming from like the Duke, wasn't it?
Yeah. Do we call him, find out where he's at?
Yes.
Did you want to adjourn first, or?
Yeah, we can do that.
Adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Nothing, you don't have anything for?
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.